Set circle with us. Finish it up then.
Good.
We are on, we're on.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, seven o'clock, seven oh one corrections. It is seven oh one, we had a non-public, that was the reason for the hardiness of starting this meeting. Uh, my name's Toby Harmon, I'm Chair.
Kathryn Tarnowski.
My tasker.
And because we've had an issue before with people not being able to be heard on the audio, especially at home and on the archived version of the Select Board meeting, we now have a podium here and we respectfully ask you to come to the podium to address any statements, things, concerns that you want to state. So, that said, the first thing we have is the Water Commission. John, are you up?
Yep. Good evening, so I'm sure you folks are familiar with the lien process. If not, we just sort of outlined what those steps are. So currently, the New Fields Village Water and Sewer District has about a dozen customers that are fed into the sewer only, they don't have a water feed into their house. Our current process for delinquency when it comes to ratepayers not paying their bills is to shut the water off. Works effectively for those that have it, but in this case, we've got a fistful of people that do not, we generally don't issue, but we would like to get the assistance of the town to help with leaning the properties since the Water and Sewer District is a separate municipality from the town.
What's the Mayor June reason on item three, John? Scoot the lien on Mayor June.
Yeah, our fiscal period runs through April.
Yeah.
Like the town, so calendars are off just a little bit, but...
Yeah, any questions?
No, didn't we talk about a notice or a form or something that would help to tighten this up so the communication's clear and the steps are all laid out?
Yep, so Sue, we'd been in contact with Sue McKinnon, our town clerk and tax collector, and she's made it very clear that she's more than willing to help us with the process. And she's had to do it before for property tax, so I would assume it would be similar in fashion how the notifications would go out to the ratepayers to be warned of the potential for lien, it wouldn't be an immediate lien, it would be a process, yes. Yep, and we would just adhere to whatever Sue felt should happen because she's, as I said, she's familiar with that. We just need the assistance of the town because we don't have the ability as a Village Water and Sewer District to lien property.
Mark? I know other towns do this, so, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. What's the, so if someone's not paying their bill for a year, what's the, what's the amount of time that you start to employ a lien? Is it, does it say two years and one day, is that right?
Yeah, again, the process is laid out for how that works, Sue would know better than I. I'm not here necessarily to speak to the exact process of how the lien would take that.
That would be important, you know.
Well, it's the same process that the town uses, so if...
Or tax lien for a project.
Yes.
It's, we're not looking for, you know, a variation of lien process, we just need something to help us in those situations where we don't have the ability to shut the water off and the customer owes the money.
Is there any outstanding now, John?
We potentially have one situation that may need to be resolved.
And this indicates reporting yearly in February, so that would be accounting for the last 12 months for each customer. I don't know if that answered your question, it seemed like your question was for how...
I was just saying for how long.
It would be outstanding if it were initiated, if it's getting reported every February, then it wouldn't be longer than those 12 months.
Right.
In any given reporting.
Okay.
Anything else from the board?
Do we also have hindrance on obtaining a building permit or anything like that if you have outstanding, because there is this sort of disconnect, or is that something that local towns do or don't do? I mean, if they don't, haven't paid their taxes, they can't get a building permit for something, but not if they have an unpaid...
I'm not sure of how the building...
So that's not something we would normally...
Yes, part of what we're looking for, we just need that...
Straightforward, just not paying your sewer bill.
Yeah. And those customers that we can't shut the water off, I mean, obviously, if there's no water going in, there's no water going out, so in those instances where we have customers who are connected to the well, we can shut them off, and we do need to be.
Anything from the audience? Questions, concerns, issues? Seeing none, I will make a motion that we move forward to this and set up for the property tax lien process for the Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you very much.
Are you a second?
I can.
All in favor? All right, before you sit down.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, you guys were doing some test wells, what's the status on that? Can you give us a thumbnail?
Again, unfortunately, the two locations that were selected out on the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests did not pan out adequately for us to be able to establish a test well in either of the two sites that were laid out. We did ask for the well driller, since he was there, to explore another section up on the hill where the antenna, the mobile antenna is by our treatment plant, our blending facility, and unfortunately, he was unable to get the rig into the woods comfortably to be able to drill where he wanted, so at this point, we've suspended that process of looking for more water, most likely until next summer.
Where are we, where are we at now on our water level?
We are struggling, and we anticipate that we will keep the outside watering ban in effect until at a minimum the end of the year.
So I'm taking it you didn't have Bill Tebow's dowser rod stick?
We have the dowsing rod, it's actually at the Water and Sewer Office, but we don't have Bill unfortunately to help us with that.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir, thank you, Wendy.
Really, thank you.
Ex officia reports, Planning Board from 11 September, Cap?
Oh. Sorry, I didn't take my, I didn't bring my notes from the planning board meeting with me, however, we did talk about following up with Muddy River on adherence to their plan, specifically because they requested shifting the residence from the apartment over the garage back to the original building that was a home. There were nuances about it having been used as an office, nuances about the flow, what the septic can handle, and the report that they originally provided to the planning board, the conditional approval of an idea was really based on the septic system being able to handle the business flow and the residential flow that would be included if that was used as a three-bedroom or four-bedroom home as it's built. And so further investigating needs to happen to get correct answers, to be able to even have the planning board be able to make a decision on that that makes sense. Definitely, it's based on the flow.
All right.
So it's all about supporting the subject, and then concerns about parking and the amount of parking on the site compared to what's been planned for, those is also being looked into. Certainly, I think we were talking about the rain garters, and that's going to come up on our agenda here tonight as well, process, progress on that.
Mobile station.
Yep, thank you, and the mobile station lighting, Glenn is going to reach out and try and set up a visit likely in the evening to see the lighting and speak directly with them about the discord between what they believe is what they planned for and got approved for and what the planning board doesn't have a consensus on that. So there's a disagreement at this time about the style of the downward lighting, which really shows up as backwards, backlighting, and looks like neon lighting, for all intents and purposes, that's not, we don't have a zoning approval for that, and so that shouldn't be happening, and it's in the process.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Mark, Conservation Commission, 15 September, Monday?
Yes, so we had a visitor at, for ConCom, which was Kristen Murphy for a window insert program, which I believe we were sending out some information to the town on utilizing that service, so not sure if that has gone out as of yet, but that was...
Can you expand on that a little bit, what it is, so if anybody's watching and didn't see the ConCom?
I believe it is, it was for a, or basically heat loss, and for, also for making sure that if someone wanted to conserve on their heating bill, that that was the case, I might be incorrect on that, but...
But it's basically a window insert that's clear, it's framed to the window, it fits inside.
Right.
And was it no charge to the homeowner?
No charge.
No charge to the homeowner, and should, if you've got some rattly, creaky windows, it should assist in your...
Uh huh, yeah, and so, and that information should be sent out to our town residents, and we had a new Chair, Allison Watts, for, as the interim Chair for the ConCom, and that is for one year currently, so I believe that was settled on Com. And we had a public discussion about the Anderson easement letter. Public discussion will be on October 20th, and we will have that, I believe, at seven o'clock on October 20th. Or is the CSX parcel, I had done a little bit of research and had dug around, and interestingly enough, I was reaching out to a few people that were talking about the Smith Woods parcel, and had also spoke to Robert Spurrel, he's a land agent with the State of New Hampshire Division of Forests, and Brian Hots at the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests, so just wanted to see if we can get some kind of conversation going with them to see if we could either gain an easement or usage for the CSX property, or maybe better yet to actually acquire that property. And if you're saying that the, I don't know if that's, if, that it could be used for water access as well, but maybe that's a reason to chase that down if we're having an issue with water, so... Just thought, just spitballing here. So, and I can reach out to them, there is a gentleman at CSX, I did get his contact information, Mike Twiddle, if you've heard of him, but if you want to send out an email to him, or I can reach out to him and make some kind of intro, I think we should start a conversation sooner than later with him.
And Caleb Fields, first meeting? Sorry, Caleb Fields, first meeting as a member of the board?
Yeah, Caleb Fields.
Okay, great, all right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, got that X in the block. Trash and Recycling, RFP, is next on the agenda. We had a non-public beforehand, whether or not to extend the contract with Elm for two years at a reduced rate as opposed to what it would be if we had to put the contract out at bid for, starting in January. The board voted unanimously to extend the two-year contract with Elm for every other week recycling, we explored weekly recycling, and it was just not financially prudent to do so, it was going to be double the amount that we're paying now, so we've saved approximately thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars a year by staying with the bi-weekly recycling. We also discussed glass, glass is still not a marketable product at this time, but the board, the decision of the board was should glass become a marketable recyclable item, then we would reopen the issue and see whether it was viable to do glass recycling, and the catch-all for that is we, people wanted to recycle their glass and still go to new market. So that's the update on the MSW, municipal solid waste, and the recycling. So that's, problem has been solved, which makes the very next agenda item very easy because the next agenda item was the trash and recycling RFP, which we will not need to send out and deal with that. All right, next item up on the agenda is Rain Garden bids. Bill, have you seen these, you have not seen these, have you? All right, we have two, one from Ry Beach, and we also have one from Earth and Stone and Mr. Anthony Curro. And did you get any pushback or confusion on the people that are bidding on what changes in terms and conditions?
This, this, we just, no, I think the main thing on this is we're looking for nitrogen.
Looking nitrogen?
That's it. Some of these are not directly connected, but more like this, because we don't want to come back into things in the future, so I think we just take these items and we have about twenty-three thousand dollars to spend, maybe kind of choose which ones, we don't have two rain gardens, we go from there. And then the state, state put in eighty-seven hundred dollars for the plants and for the fireworks, we're bringing these to get going, and we actually have that installed on that on twelve fifteen submitted to the state, so we get that money back, so that's what we're looking at.
My bus for not asking you to step up to the microphones, Bill, for future reference. We have two bids here, I think it's kind of beyond our scope as a board to know what, exactly what is being looked for, and I think an appropriate course of action would be to provide these to Bill and let him review them, determine the best course of action, and then he can bring, he can communicate with the board, we'll talk about it, and we will make a decision, then we'll address it at the next Select, that's viable for the board.
You want, I don't know, I think we need to get the lien just...
Understand, that's why, go ahead, review it.
Send it out to you.
And then we'll address it, and then we'll deal with it as a board at the next meeting because time is of the essence on this, you can see deadlines, and you still didn't go to the microphone.
So can we give, oh, let's go with estimate, can we?
Yes, figure out what you want, communicate with us, Bill, make a decision, and then we'll deal, we'll address it formally at the next board, because time is of the essence, we will go for it. Push those off to you. And we also have a bid that came in for the gutters, for the roof on Town Hall, that came in today, or yesterday, I mean. And since it's the only bid, I will also put it with that, and we'll go the same way because it's the same, just good with the board?
Uh huh, yes.
Yes.
All right. I'm going to move on, next to New Hampshire DRA correspondence, as to the Warren Articles, issues Article Five and Warren Article Ten. So basically, we received the note from DRA, they approved the Warren Articles back in March prior to the town voting on them, and the establishment of the fund, I'll just cherry pick this here, the establishment of the fund itself, as well as appropriations, are legitimate and valid, however, trust funds established under an RSA are not themselves authorized to accept gifts, therefore, such gifts, legacies, or devices shall be invested and accounted for separately from and not co-mingled with amounts appropriated under Paragraph One, and shall be subject to the custody and events, investment provisions applicable to trust funds accepted under RSA. So everything is legit despite the first readback that we got, and all it is, is an admin drill, make sure we put the monies in the proper place and the proper channels, and Cap, if you're interested, I would like to pass this off to you, there's a point of contact, talk to her and get any clarity that she might offer so we're sure we're in compliance.
What?
You good on that, Mark?
Yeah, so the one question with that would be, can a town resident make a donation to the town?
Yes.
So even if it's for, let's say, the Town Hall, because there was, there was an issue with putting in...
That's Warren Article, those, that the issue was that the money was attempting to go into that twenty thousand dollar...
They can simply make a donation to the town.
Yes.
And that would be it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Are you good on that, Cap?
Yeah.
You have that for action.
Yeah.
Next issue we have, Chief, New Hampshire Highway Safety Grant Pedestrian and Bicycle Agreement.
Yes, this is just an amendment to the grant that was approved. It was traditionally in the past, we've received funding from the Office of New Hampshire Highway Safety for Speed, DWI, and distracted driving. We applied for an amendment to what was approved this summer for some funding for bicycle and pedestrian slash crossway, education and enforcement, and that was granted, so we'll look into it, what was approved this summer, to, from eighty-five hundred to ten thousand one hundred, so it's a sixteen hundred dollar grant, it's a charter. So this is something that once signed and approved tonight, and it goes to the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office, so this will help a lot, especially around trick or treat, where we put up stuff using our department budget for safety on our Main Street for our trick or treat, we can use some of these ones for that, which will supplement our operating budget. Just like it was this summer, it just needs to be signed by one person. And the yellow tabs are where you need to date and sign.
Any input from the board on this? Sixteen hundred more dollars in the pocket. Okay, I make a motion and accept it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get all the language on the, that you needed, Wayne?
Yes, yeah, once he should does, the minutes will, will make sure that the minutes stick to exactly what they need for the Attorney General's Office. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Water and Sewer Email Accounts. You want to speak to that? And you're still John Hayden?
John Hayden. Yeah, I wasn't aware this was on the agenda tonight, but I have a town email address, Bill has a town email address, Wendy does not, she's our administrator, and George does not, our third water commissioner. Much the same as any of the town departments, communication through email can be problematic if you're using your personal accounts. Back before the town was amicable to give, giving planning board members addresses, I tried to create Gmail accounts that were, you know, New Fields Planning Member, whatever, just, but it gets confusing, it's much easier to have a consistent town government email. So I think at this point, we would probably only look for, for two additional email addresses so that each commissioner would have an email, the NewFieldsNH.gov email, and he would have, as our administrator, I don't think Josh would need one, is that correct, the operator, he would use his own? So, so we would ask that the Select Board consider having those emails in conjunction with the town, and we also, as commissioners, as the Water and Sewer Department, would pay for those.
Those are my next mail address.
Yeah, no, we would pay for them out of our budget, we just, rather than us try to establish our own emails that just seem to make sense, that we would ask for the town to help with that, and clearly, we wouldn't want to burden the town.
Or we could swap two emails for no hydro charge.
Yeah, well...
That's why, twelve hundred dollars a year?
That's extra.
We got a tanker truck, yeah, okay, I thought I'd run it up the fly pole. All right, I have no issue with doing that, it's, even though it's separate per se from the town, it's a de facto town entity, so I would support doing so, Cap?
I'm agreeable to that as well.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and provide two email accounts for Water Department, and provided that you will be responsible for the financial cost of same. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that very much.
Next item on the agenda, Badger Park Bench Donation, so Sandra Kealan called me the other day, and she is with the Exeter Alliance Club, and she said, "Hobie, we would like to donate bench to the town for use at Badger Park." These are basically made out of Trex, there's two of them down at the corner of Eighty-Five and Summer Street in the garden that the garden club has, and there's also one at the school. I went down and looked at it, took a picture of it, it's pretty solid, and it's actually a very nice bench. It does get anchored into the ground with a long anchor and a lock, so hopefully, it will not disappear, Chief, so you can put that on your scan. I make a motion, we accept this for Badger Park.
Thanks.
All in favor? Under that, I'm sorry, Michael? Yes, sir.
Michael, send in on Exeter Road, I understand the desire to add things to Badger Park. In the past, we've received requests from a variety of people in town to put benches typically in the name of somebody here, we've done that down at the landing, but obviously, space is a premium around here. Badger Park is our veterans' park, and while I can appreciate somebody wanting to provide benches for that, I would think you might want to be a little more particular, just off the top, not that anybody said anything, but you know, if Bill Tebow's family comes and asks to put a bench in that park, those veterans who have served here in town, participated in town, I think you need to be a little more particular, and I'm just throwing it out there, I, trust me, I don't have a problem with, with benches and improving the park, I just think you want to think about the potential for, you know, people like that having priority.
I would address that, and thank you for bringing that point up, Michael, I would address that, that this bench that is being donated here is a non-name bench, and the, we have two granite benches that are very hard and very small and rather uncomfortable at the park, and while I appreciate the point you make, I think this would provide an opportunity for somebody who wants to reflect on the sacrifices made, as evidenced by that park, this provides a well-seated place for them to do so. Lisa?
He raised a good point. I think, I think the term is we need to be discerning.
Um, I think we, I think the term is, we need to be discerning about what goes in there, otherwise, who do we say no to? Who do we yet say yes to? So, I think that this is opening up an opportunity to come up with some conditions, like, what are the conditions to have a bench there, right? Otherwise, we're gonna have fifty benches there, we're gonna have twenty benches there, how many benches are we gonna have there? So, we're gonna, without some set of, um, objectives, like why, what qualifies as putting a bench there? You're gonna piss off a lot of people.
Well, I would offer to you, are you, are you all set? Uh, then I would offer to you that, one, it's through the discretion of the select board, two, this is not a named bench, which will incite a bench competition, uh, in remembrance. And I think, as I referenced, the previous two stone benches, uh, are hard, they're uncomfortable, and this provides an opportunity to reflect, and I have faith in the select boards, and maybe that is something, digressing slightly with the veterans' organization that is in the process of being formed, uh, that could be addressed within that, with the, under the auspices of a charter, so to speak, from the select board to that entity, and that could be set up in the terms and conditions by the select board working with veterans' organization. To preclude that headbutting contest, which some foresee, and I think.
Is there an upcoming meeting? It looked like there was one on the calendar specifically for veterans, uh, meeting here in Newfields. Would they be discussing?
Uh, that's what, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay.
But I think, in fact, this is a unnamed bench, and it's, I, your points are well taken. I, believe me, I don't disagree with it. But I think because it's a, uh, a quality product, and I think the fact that it's neutral, and I think the points are taken, and we can address that as a board, uh, and maybe set some terms and conditions for future.
Are there any terms and conditions with accepting these benches?
None. Absolutely none.
And they match the other benches that are in public places in town already? Same color, same size, same product.
This one will be brown instead of green. Does that address your concerns?
No.
I think the fact, the fact that this bottlenecks to the select board, you're not gonna have fifty benches, you're not gonna have, you know, uh, bench chaos, you know, you're gonna have people using discretion in town saying.
Okay, well, I think it's factual that we set up a terms and conditions, and the points are all taken, and we can do that.
Just right, it's that, that's a landing.
Bill, you're killing me, man. You're killing me here. Use the microphone.
Oh, six or seven years ago, somebody just planted a bench there. And it's, it was shriveled in memory of somebody. And, you know, there was, it just turned into a wreath. And then I think it didn't happen again. So, I think that goes to, and on this rag garden, this level, people open, I put a bench there, and I, I'm not one of them. So, I think, I think Tom, I, you think, you, well, you can't just go plant a bench anywhere you want, and it's going to be complicated, so. People see the pain, honestly, I just, I don't want to sit there.
Yeah, clearly, the horse is already on the, on this, all right. I think going forward, what, what is opening up is, oh, we need to have some process for this, otherwise, we're gonna become known as the town of benches.
Michael, did we not establish a procedure and a protocol for the landing?
For the landing.
I think, then, I would like to investigate and cherry pick off of that, not reinvent the wheel, and apply that, see what we can do to apply it to Badger Park.
Yeah, there were specific requirements, uh, somebody had to be found. Um, you, you can go back and look at that, uh, but again, you know, in my opinion, I, I cannot see you desire to move forward, but, uh, you know, I just, I, I don't think it's worth it, so.
I did hear, in one of our prior meetings, someone mentioned not having benches at the park because of the nature of the park and having it not be a sort of playful hangout place for just anybody. And, um, I'm not sure if the person who was speaking was a veteran herself.
She was not.
But, you know, uh, if, uh, veterans are gonna be potentially taking over the park, it would really be meaningful to have their input on the terms and conditions moving forward. And it seems that they could decide, if they don't want these benches there, they could then be given back to be used elsewhere, if that were a decision they would make when they were taking it over. It, it's not granite, it's not permanent per se. So, if we move forward with it, and then in the future, it's prudent to make a change, or those who take over the care and keeping of the park decide this is not what they want, then it's within their purview to say, "We don't want these benches," and they can do that.
Did we not already move on this bench?
We did. So, we move forward, and it can be changed in the future, it's not permanent.
I, I would offer, and I will put on my, uh, twenty years of Marine Corps service here, to sit in that park and reflect on what that park represents is sacred ground. And I can appreciate the points, but I don't think there'd be a lot of tolerance for town fullery in that park. And I would wager, if you saw town fullery going on in there, you would probably address it in a quick and effective manner. Joni, Joni, up to speak, please. Or him, because he refuses to.
Joni Harmon, I have a question, Chief, like, do you think that maybe a redson is, the material, more?
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to be random bench. It has to apply to any veteran here in town. Um, if, if anything, in my opinion, that anything that's filming there should be reflected to the people who serve this country from this town, not just random stuff.
Gotcha.
In that case, uh, those points are all well taken, we'll make a note of it, and we'll investigate this as far as cherry picking from the town landing bench protocol. And once we get our veterans' entity established, we will make this point of order and have discussions with the select board how to preclude, uh, random bench attacks. Any questions on that? Thank you for your input, guys. What do we got next? Gonna hold off on checks, uh, MS. Uh, we gotta do the summary inventory evaluation. This is a report required, uh, and you just have to sign it, and, uh, it goes back to Rob. Basically, he's gonna deal with, all three of us are gonna have to sign it, and it's dealing with evaluation of the property in the town, that this is true and accurate. Any questions on that?
No.
No.
Thanks for the valuation, you want to? Based on?
Uh, let's see, net valuation without utilities, uh, ninety-one million, five hundred and five thousand?
How much?
Ninety-one, five zero five?
Sixty-four.
And six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
How much was the revenue? Of all Army and Navy?
Well, that's the, uh, total, that, that was the net valuation without utilities.
Last year, our total value of Army and Navy was one hundred and fifty million. So.
We do not have that number on here, Michael.
Okay, hold on a second, okay. If that's, uh, sorry.
I'm gonna hold on August revenues and expenses. Prior meeting minutes, I would like to table that till the next meeting. Uh, we have a Conservation Commission appointment of Tom Redford. Uh, the Conservation Commission, uh, determined that Mr. Redford would be the perfect candidate for the, for, he has a solid interest in the Conservation Commission, and, uh, I'll make a, um, uh, motion that we appoint Mr. Red to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item on the agenda is trees moved on Summer Street. Basically, this is a Eversource coming in and saying there's a tree that they need to take down on Summer Street. They, uh, the tree's been marked with blue and white, uh, Eversource tape, and they will come in and be dropping that tree. They're fully cognizant, all the paperwork's been done. And it's just a heads up to us that this is gonna transpire. Ice rank insurance sign off. Michael, you're all set on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Obviously, it's important to, uh, if the proper, to make an even larger range this year, so. And we have a liability, so it should be one easier for everyone.
All right, uh, next item I want to bring up for the board is, uh, you probably saw the email that went out as far as budget time, and so we're looking at seven and twenty-one October, and then also four and eighteen. Does that, go set it with your schedules.
Uh, for the next meetings?
Yes. For October and November.
Say it again?
So, October seventh and October twenty-first, and November fourth and eighteen.
With me?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna hold that till the next select board meeting. The, what's the status on the magical appearing and disappearing camper?
Oh, camper, camper is, camper has been disposed of properly through towing service. Was brought up to Concord, and that is put up for auction and done the right way. I think that was, I'll get you the name of the, uh, towing company again.
Okay, and what clause is incurred by the town?
Zero.
Excellent, okay. And what about the fellow that spent the money for new tires and wheels?
Uh, I reached out to him a number of times and said, uh, the camper is going up to Concord. If you want to go up there, reach out to them, so you can get first dibs on it. And he said, "Well, I'm on vacation," and blah, 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 so I said, "Okay, just letting you know that it's there." I said, "I'm sorry this was, it had to happen this way," but, um, he had, he had taken that, and that, maybe a couple of gas tanks out of the way there. Had some things that might have been of value, so maybe it'd be a wash for him.
Okay. Uh, takes care of that. Uh, you should have received a personnel manual update, um, from.
I did.
Wayne. And, uh, hopefully you reviewed it, received it and reviewed it, and I'd like to address that in non-public for the next select board meeting. And concurrently to that, uh, at the next non-public, I would like to, uh, talk about my meeting with the Friends of the Library and financial considerations in regards to the HVAC system for, uh, the library. See here. August revenues and expenses, let's take a look at that.
Yeah.
We're gonna hear about the insurance update this month, uh, in October.
Seventy.
Rumor is?
Sixty and twenty-two percent increase.
Thanks. Seen no issues with that. While I'm along those lines, thinking of money and expenses, uh, I will be having a meeting with the, uh, head of the Donner Fund, who has helped us out with the ALS, uh, expenses, and to further fine tune where we are going to be at as far as the cost of maintaining ALS in the town. And all probability, we're gonna have to put that on the operating budget, and we're looking at, right now, sixty-eight thousand a year additional cost, which basically comes down to forty dollars a person ahead for this expense. But the life you save may be. Any thoughts on that? Everybody's, yeah, boss of doing business. Uh, any other select board member status reports on issues in work?
Um, the Main Street Traffic Safety Group, uh, follow-up from our last, we're still gathering some data to wrap up from the meeting we had, uh, with Scott Vogel from the RPC. And then we'll be able to produce the notes from that, as well as, um, information that he's continuing to gather for us, and, um, he, Young is connecting to gather some feedback from other places that have used some similar strategies to find out if they perceive them as effective. So, as that's all coming together, we are continuing to work on it, and then we're gonna have a, an opportunity to address it as a group once all the data's together.
Anything else you have, Kat?
I thought they were very helpful.
Yeah.
They were very helpful.
I'm gonna get you a reverse ear trumpet, so everybody can hear you on the audio, instead of you not gonna come up to the microphone. And the last item that I want to address is an email that the board received, uh, from Attorney Manzelli on sixteen September, and then on twenty-one September. And it accused myself and another individual in town of demonstrating bias against the Vernon Family Farm. So, I have a little statement that I put together. Anyone serving on a town select board takes an oath to support and defend the Constitution and the State of New Hampshire and the United States Constitution. We take an oath to support and defend all ordinances, laws, and agreements as to the town, the state, and the federal government. The town is to be managed as a business, thus ensuring public safety and fiscal prudence. Citizens, while they may be friends and neighbors, are subject to the social compact and the responsibilities, and legal responsibilities of citizenship. Managing and enforcing ordinances and planning board notices of decision does not correlate to bias. A documented history of compliance or not compliance and addressing issues in a forthright manner is required, such as noise, signage, and construction issues. Council for Vernon Family Farm has previously referenced approximately a hundred and thirty-five engagements and discussions as the Vernon Family Farm by town boards. Common sense proffers there is a reason for a hundred and thirty-five discussions. Asking factual-based questions is not demonstrative of bias. It is demonstrative of ensuring ordinances and notices of decision are applied as written. It provides clarity as to outstanding issues. It is essential that all dealings are equitable across the board, thus precluding the setting of bad precedent. Attention to detail and due diligence are paramount. Knowing all the facts and the history is the responsibility incumbent on those in positions of responsibility. Dismissing past offenses not relevant is in itself unacceptable. Having read every document that is available in regards to Vernon Family Farm multiple times, many of which are not online, I am intimately familiar with the issues and nuance of this matter. Correspondence, minutes of boards, emails, legal documents, surveys, drawings, and applications have all been read and analyzed in depth. I have taken those documents and collated them by year indexed and cross-referenced them. I am intimately familiar with the documents regarding Vernon Family Farm. Holding ourselves as select board members accountable to our oath and holding citizens, citizens accountable to the social compact is far from demonstrating bias. In fact, it demonstrates accountability and is a keystone of good governance. It is indeed unfortunate that we, as a town, since January first of twenty-twenty-three through nine September of this year, have spent approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars in legal fields dealing with Vernon Family Farm. These expenditures have not been incurred out of animosity to Vernon Family Farm, but are a result of the town seeking compliance. I categorically reject any bias in my position as Chair of the Select Board. The Select Board is always available to discuss any issues in a calm, measured manner so as to reach resolution of issues. Yeah, any comment?
Glad to hear that you're not holding a bias, and I'm glad to see the nature of communications moving in a better direction from what I've seen in the past. I think that we have, um, work to do as far as how we language our agendas, and we've already begun to be more thorough about that and the way that we word our communications and our process following policies and procedures so that people understand why communications are happening and what the intentions are, and leave no space for misinterpreting. And I think that's something that as a board, we just need to continue to pay attention to.
Michael?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity, since I was the other person who was accused in that letter, uh, in that email from, uh, Ms. Manzelli. Uh, I'd like to just address this and get it on the public record, since the documentation is in the public record, and I think it requires clarification. Uh, I was accused of actually, um, uh, of having bias and using my position in the town improperly. Um. Oddly enough, uh, the accusations were made about actions I took after I had left the select board uh, and prior to my appointment in August to become an alternate on the planning board. My time as a private citizen, I certainly am allowed, as any other citizen is, to weigh in on matters in the, in the general public. And at that time, I communicated with the charitable trust unit about concerns that I have about the management of the easement, which falls under the charitable trust unit's jurisdictions. I laid out issues that I had laid out during my years on the select board and the years on the planning board. Um, and I communicated those to the Attorney General. Um, I did not, for the most part, it was a factual discussion of the issues there, as well as my opinion in terms of the interpretation of those issues. Uh, at no time did I represent myself as an official in this town. At no time did I represent myself as anything but a citizen of this town who had concerns about the management of that easement. Um, I think it is entirely unfair and improper to be accused of this. Um, it's unfortunate that these issues weren't raised with me. I'm sure, I don't know if they were raised with you, uh, Mr. Chairman, before the accusations were made. Uh, but I want to make clear to anybody who reads this material at some point in time, the charges are false, the accusations are false. Uh, I believe my actions were entirely appropriate. I have always tried to, uh, when I was on any board or commission here in town, follow the rules, follow the statutes, and be proper about how I represented myself and/or the town. Um, I think these charges are entirely inappropriate. It's unfortunate, but I appreciate the opportunity to clarify the record. Thank you.
And I would just offer to you, Michael, that you were referenced while you were for such behavior, while you were a member of the select board in that email.
I, I understand, and again, I, I, I think that it's unfortunate, certainly that they didn't approach me, didn't ask me about this prior to this. Um, you know, I, to make a, an accusation like that in a public record, it's, it's not the way that this should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On that note, any other issues anybody cares to address? Yes, sir.
Well, I have one thing to say, but I think I'm going to help on that. The one I want to add first is, it's really encouraging to see local town government working so well.
All right.
So the other thing is, uh, I'd like the select board to consider adding alternate members to the conservation committee. So right now, we have three land boards. We have the ZBA, the planning board, and conservation, and two of those three have alternate members. Now, the reason for having alternate members is pretty obvious, right? It's so when you can't pull together a full board, you can still conduct business. And I think if you look at the records, you'll see in the minutes of the planning board and the ZBA that there have been times when we didn't have a full board, and if we didn't have a full board, we couldn't conduct business, which caused all of those parties to come back for another, for another meeting. So again, my request is that the select board consider adding alternate, alternatives to the conservation committee.
Uh, and on, on that issue, uh, I have reviewed the original documents of the Conservation Commission when it was formed. There is no reference to alternate members on there. That said, I have also looked at the state RASAs, and there's absolutely nothing that precludes an alternate member positions being, uh, developed. And so, uh, I think we should pursue that, and I will, with the concurrence of the board, uh, draft a letter or an email to, uh, the chair and the vice chair of the board, and see about moving forward in that direction.
Um. As far as an alternate goes, uh, is it really necessary for to have an alternate with seven people on that board right now?
Well, it's necessary with the planning board, and it's necessary with the ZBA, and so I would say yes. It is, the evidence is evidence that it is necessary, because if you look back at the minutes, you'll see that meetings did not happen because they didn't have enough board members and/or alternates.
The original language establishing, um, the conservation commission itself doesn't include alternates, but it doesn't preclude having alternates. That might need to be rewritten, or the language would have to be amended, if that's a change that gets made. Uh, and what is your minimum to have a vote on anything?
Your quorum of? Quorum of, uh, so majority, so you'd have to have, uh, four out of seven.
And some meetings couldn't be held because there weren't enough?
Right.
So that, I think, answers that question. If you need a minimum of four and you haven't had meetings where you have even four.
Um, yeah, so.
That would make sense, some alternates.
What is the argument against having?
Argument of just asking a question.
Yeah, that's just, I think that that's it. Yeah, it seems like it has held the, the commission up, so it might be a good solution.
Good to hear. Thanks.
Michael? Please, sir. Thank you.
So, to Catherine's point, and I think where you were alluding, I, I, just as somebody who has dealt with these issues, I would highly recommend you talk to municipal association. I'm not sure, even though you're not empowered or precluded.
Precluded.
From doing alternates. I, I tend to think that you do not have the statutory authority unless the body grants you that authority.
Um. I am in select board.
The body being the town.
Right, the language.
You may, you may just have to have a warrant article that says that the town will allow the select board to appoint alternates. To be honest, it's probably the safest route to go, regardless of whether you can or cannot do it. Um, I know that it would be nice to have alternates now, but just as a recommendation, I, I, I think you, you need to look at that, and like I said, it's better for the body to weigh in on this.
And.
And then.
Make a decision.
Yeah, make it.
It will. The points will take it, because if you look at the founding document for the Conservation Commission, that was approved by the town.
Right.
It has to be. It, it would, you can't form a board without the approval of the town, and that's why, that's why I say I tend to think that, while it does not preclude you from doing it, I don't think you've been empowered to do it. And, and it, just going rude of writing a warrant article saying that you can appoint, you know, up to three alternates is probably the safest route to go. That's, that's the only thing.
And the only one I was making, the RSA is allow you, so it's just a matter of the administrative protocol that you follow if you're saying.
I thought.
John, hey, still?
Just a little taken aback by this. I, so I've served as a planning board member for, for a while. Planning and zoning is definitely regulated by state RSA. A conservation commission operates entirely different than planning and zoning, so I would strongly take Michael's recommendation as a plan.
Yeah.
Looking at the municipal association, try to get some guidance, because it would, I understand it would make sense to have alternates on the conservation commission, but I'm not sure I've ever heard of that, but, but that's all. I know for, for planning and zoning, it's specific within the RSA. Like you're allowed so many regular members, so many alternates, they're either appointed, elected, you know.
That was course of action I was contemplating anyway, but the point I was making earlier, the RSAs do allow it.
Yeah.
The original formation of the conservation commission was by warrant article, so it is therefore logical.
So.
We'll check with the municipal association, make sure it's scopeless, focus.
Since I'm standing up here, I want to back up to the Route eighty-five discussion. That's still a thing? Is it public meetings? Are there?
Yeah.
Are there?
For safety?
Yeah.
It's a, we're basically just still following up from the last meeting.
Haven't seen or heard of any public things.
Right, and so it's really. Information gathering based on the concerns that were shared in the wider meeting. The representative from the RPC was invited to that meeting and unable to attend.
Is that a public meeting that people could?
The public, that was the.
Notice.
Yeah, it was the end of August, I believe.
The public meeting?
No, the larger one.
What I'm driving at is I, resident of the town and somebody that lives and has business on Route eighty-five, if there's more continuing discussions about whatever's happening with eighty-five, I would like to know, and I would like to be able to attend those meetings and get this information. That's my point.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm asking.
So at the end of the meeting where we were all together and the DOT was here, and all of the concerns were being shared, uh, the representative from the RPC was invited to that meeting and unable to attend. He was able to, uh, read the transcript and watch the meeting that he wasn't able to attend, and then come and offer additional or offer to go seek out additional resources to serve back to the questions that were asked. And that meeting sent us on sort of a fact-finding mission, uh, following.
Is there an actual, like, group of, of people meeting?
Uh, so the.
Activists?
So there was a smaller meeting, and then that, um, led to a public meeting.
Yes.
In the public meeting, concerns were shared and questions were asked.
That was that?
Asked them. So it ended with, there's a variety of information we don't, we don't know, but now we know what people would like to know, so that we can move forward to gather that, and then we'll have another wider meeting.
People that.
Meeting, so everyone can hear back answers to their questions, and then we'll have a better sense of what information we've gathered. So as a group, um, as a whole town, if anything is going to be done, everyone's going to have an opportunity to look at what those options are, what the costs are, what the legality is, what are the rippling impacts, what have we found out? Um, no decisions are being made.
Are you?
Absent.
Are you working with these people as a member of selecting the new fields or as a?
I'm a representative of the board, um, just for gathering information, not for making any decisions.
But you're having meetings?
We had one meeting.
You want to be notified in the future, right?
I think it's important for the public to know what's happening, and there's discussions.
In this meeting.
Can make a, make a.
Meeting.
Notify.
Um, in this select board meeting, all of the steps have been referenced, that the meeting was going to get scheduled, that it was held, that we're gathering information. And so every select board meeting, I provide an update on where that's at. Every single meeting, I've provided an update on where that's at. So no meetings in which decisions are made have been had. Really a matter of, um, if asking local police chiefs about their perception of effectiveness of certain strategies is going to be done, it's best done by our police chief. Having our fire chief present for a meeting to voice concerns that would impact the fire department, that's just gathering information. Yeah, so it's not a decision, make a meeting.
It's just. And monitoring some. And a few select board meetings within the timeframe of that other meeting that we had, that public meeting, and this is the first time that I've heard a report on what's going on with the Route eighty-five, which is why I'm asking questions.
Absolutely.
How many people were at that meeting?
Uh, it was, um, Lieutenant Blaze, Chief Young, Chief Buxton, myself, and Scott Vogel from the RPC. And that was a follow-up from the larger meeting, because the representative from the RPC wasn't able to attend, and we were hoping to find out if there were any resources they might have, share, or offer in light of the state referencing that in the meeting. So the state mentioned a variety of different things. People asked questions. People got answers to some questions, and then that left us with more questions at the end.
John, I will ensure that any or notice be put out as to any issues with eighty-five so that the full community is cognizant of it, and that there will be full input from the top.
Thank you.
I just want to add to that. That meeting was basically what can the RBC do? Because there was some mentions at that meeting that John was at pertaining to some things that were mentioned pertaining to some road safety audits, stuff like that.
And grants.
He came in and clarified, like, we don't fit the criteria of these. We don't have the data, the serious PI and fatal accidents in a tenured period. Um, we did not feel that there was a need for a big public. It was an informational thing we have. We didn't know the rules, regulations when it came to the evidence, what they could offer. So it was more like he couldn't go to that recent meeting that was open in public. He provided some information and some ideas of what other towns do, and then basically we're looking into that town, and then we're going to report back to the town. Either in a select board meeting or an open level meeting pertaining to where do we go? And that's basically what it was.
Just information gathering.
Fair enough. Broad, it should be broadcast.
Just want to make sure it's public, something.
John, guarantee it. Any other issues that anyone would like to bring forth? Very? On that, I will make a mo, take a motion to end the meeting.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah. You may.
As you said, I'm making.
I have to take the motion. All right, I'll make it. I'll make a motion when we end the meeting, and the time is.
Thought I could.
Side after home favor? All right.
Losing my hea, my hearing's going also.
Who? Who?